You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Third.
Second, anything further on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make your motion, we approve the non-public meeting minutes one and two, January 3rd.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Anything to add, Michael?
No.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public input before the public hearing.
Looks like they're going to keep their powder dry.
Consideration of new business, Upper Wilson Pond Dam construction contract award.
So we opened bids on that last Friday, it had been out to bid for about a month. Included the sheet here, so the bids ranged from the low bid for Gordon Services of 1,335,000 and some change, to the high bid of Kingsbury Construction, 1,670,000 and change. Gordon was low by about 60,000, so in terms of the overall project cost, relatively, relatively normal amount, it's not like they were a million dollars under, half a million dollars under. So Charlie did some reference checking, and as you'll see in here, I guess he didn't put it in here, but I did confirm that he recommends the award to Gordon Services for the amount of 1,335,700, and I included some additional funding for contingency if things come up during construction.
Do you have a sense of why some of those line items were so different between the companies?
I know, I talked to Gordon specifically about how low the concrete numbers was, and they said the same thing, they're going to use a subcontractor, they don't do contracts, uh, concrete work, and they had two different quotes from, from, uh, concrete contractors, and there was some discrepancies, and I don't, I don't have an answer for that. Something like the mobilization completely different across the board, and I don't, that's pretty straightforward, the concrete is somewhat too, the concrete's going out for like, the concrete itself delivered in place has ended up at 150, 200 dollars per yard, so some of those numbers were pretty substantial to put in place, but I don't have an answer.
And you're, you're confident of the Gordon Services?
I am, I am, they've been, you know, they've been real decent with the town with their response to the flood damages this, this summer, it would have been, it would have taken a lot longer and a lot more money to rebuild the roads if it wasn't for them. Their response, anytime we call, like in the middle of the night, they're there. I talked to them a little bit, like I said, they had worked on dams before, it was pretty straightforward pre-work, and they're using a subcontractor that's worked on these projects before. I, my whole mind, I kind of predicted they were going to be the lowest bid, except out of all the contractors, they were the only one that could provide the materials from their pits, remove the concrete, repurpose it by crushing it at their pits, do all the excavation work, the only downside they were on was using a subcontractor, but the prices they got on the concrete with the subcontractor were obviously very low.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, Beverly.
Say the complete motion, please, Mr. Hall.
It's right here.
It's on page three of the packet. So we're looking for a total amount of up to 1 million.
I have the total amount, what I don't have is the dollars from the, is there dollars coming from a certain?
Yes, so there's 1 million from the New Hampshire DES High Hazard Grant Program, High Hazard Dam Grant Program.
What pages that on?
Pages three and four.
Pages three and four.
Thank you.
267 from Borrowing Authority, from the 2022 warrant article four, and 150 from the town-owned dam capital reserve.
I'll fill it in, thank you.
Thank you.
Second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll be planning now that, once we get that contract finalized, we'll be planning an informational meeting on the Upper Wilson Pond Dam project, and make sure to get the word out so folks know and understand the timeframe and the construction, so hoping to get going on that ASAP.
Great. Any correspondence or administrators report, or you just want to go over a break for 15?
I did hear from Representative Faulkner today that our cover bridge camera legislation has a hearing next Friday at, I believe, 10:30.
Are you going?
Yes.
Great.
Let me know if you'd like to know the room number.
Check the calendar. That's great.
So we're working through that process.
You have plenty of pictures available to you to bring.
Yes, I do.
What's your feeling on taking a 15-minute break while we wait for the public hearing?
Yep, it works for me.
Okay, Beverly?
I'm sorry?
We're gonna take, we're gonna take a break for 15 minutes before the public hearing. Ready, Garrett? Alright, at being 6 o'clock, I'll reconvene the Board of Selectments meeting today, we're gonna have a public hearing, I'll read the notice later on, fire station and bond hearing, North Winchester and California Street Bond Hearing, wastewater solar and energy efficient project bond hearing, wastewater facility study bond hearing, 2024 budget and warrant hearing. Michael, if you would.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming, there are handouts in the back and some more in the front if we run out back there, so I like to start these hearings with a sense of, this is last year's tax rate, but it kind of gives you an idea of more or less what we expect for, for future years, so the town is the portion we're talking about here tonight, this blue section, so it's about 28% of the tax bill, a lot of you just got done paying about a month or so ago, so just like to give that perspective, it's not the whole tax bill we're here talking about tonight, big red piece is the school district, they have a, probably a similar budget hearing around this time of year, and then they have a deliberative session in February, so we're here talking about the town portion. One general, general announcement, so we're gonna talk about some tax rate estimates for different warrant articles tonight, use those with even more caution than you normally would, because Swansea is, every five years goes through a revaluation of assessments, and our year is 2024, so we're gonna be going through a revaluation, so everyone probably knows from, you know, the news and whatnot, that the real estate market has changed pretty dramatically since 2019, so we're expecting some significant increases in values, which should mean the tax rate is going to go down, but if you take these, these rates that we have in here, and then when you get your new value, you compare them, you're gonna think, oh my goodness, my tax bill's gonna, gonna be crazy, and it's not necessarily the case, so I would just caution you to not use those tax rate estimates when you get your new values. So in your handout, you've got a copy of all the warrant articles, we're not gonna go through articles one or two, article two is covered, covers the zoning amendments, which the planning board had multiple discussions about, the planning board chairman is here, so you can catch Scott after if you'd like to discuss, but we're not here to discuss those tonight. So the first item we are going to discuss, which is not, not super easy to read up there, hopefully you can read it in your handout, but the, the short summary is it's a $4 million bond, 4.5 million dollar total cost for a new fire station at 321 Old Homestead Highway. I'll talk about the little funding breakdown here in a minute. So the proposed station this year is just under 9,000 square feet, it's located at 321 Old Homestead Highway, which is land the town owns, and it would replace the current fire station number two, which is in the basement of Town Hall, there are two other fire stations that would continue to exist and have equipment in them if this were to be approved. So I mentioned, you know, the article is 4.5 million, but the total estimated cost is actually 5.28 million, I'll discuss in a minute why those numbers are different, unfortunately from an accounting perspective, they have to be again, I'll explain, explain why in a minute. We got a, we got a quote for a 25-year bond from the New Hampshire municipal bond bank, and for a 25-year bond, we'd be looking at about a 290,000 payment per year, that rate is estimated at 5.75%, much higher than what we've paid for prior bonds, we've had a few as low as just under 2%. We did have a bond last year for Upper Wilson Pond Dam, which was significantly lower than this, so we're hoping that's a conservative estimate, it is gonna be lower than that, but we're, we're budgeting based on that and providing this estimate based on that, and the 24 tax rate impact is just an appropriation, it's not, not paying towards the, the bond, which wouldn't, wouldn't start to be paid until 2025. So when we started this effort, folks know this has been a long process to try to replace that fire station, the last article was in 2022, and this year our goal was to try to come as close as possible to that price, knowing that there's been significant inflation over the last few years, without compromising some of the core programs, which were kind of cancer and decontaminat, cancer prevention, decontamination, and call member spaces, so the size is, it's about a third smaller, from the 12,350 square feet from 2022, which was just under 4 million, we reduced one of the double-deep bays and shrunk the administrative areas, we also swapped where the bays were, in addition, the bays were kind of in the middle of the sandwich, now they're on the end of the sandwich, so if we need to add on bays in the future, we have that space, there's not sleeping quarters or anything like that for full-time career personnel, but that could be added in the future upstairs, in prior versions, there was the opportunity to add it on to the side, so this would be an upstairs option in the future. And with that, I will turn it over to Katie Sutherland from KCS Architects, who will kind of give you a little bit of a snapshot of the design, explain how it works, and how she came up with it. So this is a plan, a red, and then up and down.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Katie Sutherland from KCS Architects, it's, it's nice to be here tonight, thank you for participating. We've been working hard with town and the fire department last fall to really right-size this building, we've been working on this project since 2015, as Michael said, our first building is a little over 12,000 square feet, and what we've come up with is something we think that we have right-sized to really fit today's needs, but to enable it to be expanded in the future, if it needs to be expanded in the future, so it's just under 9,000 square feet. As, as Mike Farm will tell you, it is still a little more expensive than it was last time, because there's been so much inflation in the last four or five years. But basically, what we planned is a one-story administrative office area in the front of the building facing Old Homestead Highway, and then behind that, we have decontamination and firematic spaces to serve the apparatus bays, and apparatus bays at the very back, which are one-story but higher, to fit the big vehicles in that space. Let me see if I can go to the next page here, whoops. This is a site plan. Fieldstone Land use Consultants is one of our team members, and they have been helping us design the, the site, the setting of the building on the site, there are two driveways on either side of the building, there's parking to the side at the front for the public office spaces, at the side, it's really intended for the volunteer fire personnel, and some parking at the back as well, there's ample turnaround space for the large trucks to get into the bay and come out the other side if they need to. The footprint is smaller than it was, we actually reduced the footprint by 3,400 square feet, which enables us to do less grading work on the site, so we've been able to reduce the site costs quite a bit by reducing that footprint and holding it tighter to Old Homestead Highway. The floor plan, as you can see here, has a front area of offices, it's a single-story building, but the roof framing will be designed so that a second floor could be added in the future, if it is ever necessary, so there are smaller offices than we have before, but there are still office spaces, a training room for the fire department with a small kitchenette, a conference room, and some storage areas for the training equipment and that sort of thing, plus public bathrooms. The central section here is the firematic space, which includes, at the bottom of the sheet, turnout gear, this is where the gear, the clean gear is put after it's been decontaminated after a crawl, and it dries and it stays there until fire personnel come in and they're able to pick it up and use it when they're on a call, when they're coming to respond to a call. Opposite this hallway is the SCBA gear, that's the self-contained breathing apparatus, there's a compressor room and a maintenance room that is required for that equipment. Also off of the bay is an EMS room for ambulance calls, all of the EMS equipment goes in there. And then on this side, there's a door to the outside and a door to the bay to the de, the decontamination area, which is a very important area for the fire personnel to be able to take all of their gear off after they've been at a call, the decontaminated gear, wash it off outside, bring it in, take it off, get it cleaned into the laundry room, and then after they do that, they can go into a female and male locker room that has restrooms and showers. So this is a very efficient layout of the space, we've been able to reduce the sizes of some of these spaces and rethink about where they are in the building, so that we can have the bays at the back and able to expand and add another bay, should that ever become necessary, it may not become necessary, but if it does become necessary, this is a smart plan, because we can add another drive-through bay at the back of the building. So lots of work went into discussing this with town, with the fire department, to make sure that we could really get these, these spaces as small and efficient as they can be and still work well for the fire department and for the town that they're serving.
So as I mentioned, our initial goal was to try to come in at the same price, and we were unsuccessful to do that. So this area here is the kind of cancer prevention employee space for the call volunteers, that was really something we didn't want to touch at all, like she mentioned, she made a couple of spaces a little smaller, but not much. The other big opportunity would be this training area, and the select board, and I believe the fire department as well, were, were strongly, strongly supportive of maintaining that space, so they didn't have to continue to use this building or other places that aren't really designed for that use, that they would have a dedicated space to be able to train, most other departments potentially have classes, so beyond, if you're not doing anything to this space, and, you're not doing anything to the meeting room, there's only so much more we could shrink it, which is why we were unsuccessful in, in meeting the price, but we really felt like we couldn't compromise any further on the size, so I'm gonna wake up my computer.
While he's waking up the computer, I did bring a set of prints, which I put on the other side of the room on an easel there, if anyone wants to be able to look through the drawings after the meeting, they're, they're available. We also designed the building to be simple frame with metal, metal siding, so we're not looking at doing a masonry building, but trying to keep costs, you know, and maintenance smart by using a metal siding product. We were going to use a gray metal siding with red windows, red highlights, and I will show you that as we get through the drawings. Thanks, Michael. These are the sort of flat two-dimensional elevations at the building, or you can see the front of the building is a one-story, has some canopies over the entry doors, the back of the building, the apparatus bays are one-story, one tall story, there is a mezzanine over the decontamination area that provides some storage and mechanical and additional training space for the fire department. These are some perspective views, some three-dimensional views of the building and how it would look from Old Homestead Highway, we're trying to pick up on some of the vernacular from the Nanotech Building, which is an attractive new Swansea building with, you know, gray metal siding and some red accents, the red is also very appropriate for the fire department, while also keeping costs in check. Any questions? With that, I'll wait up Mike Farm to come and talk about the estimate.
Yeah, just by, by way of introduction, so this effort, one thing we also did differently was, instead of just working with the architect and then having a construction company provide an estimate, we hired DEW Construction to serve as the construction management firm to play a part in the design process, to review the materials that were being used, some of the design decisions, to have that seat at the table, to make sure we were doing things as economically as possible, and if the, I'll let these folks, I'm gonna talk about it, but if the project is approved, they will then be the construction company that will, will be building the project, so we have Mike Farm and Matt Wheaton from DEW Construction. Thank you.
So good evening, everyone, again, I'm Mike Farm with DEW Construction, joining with Matt Wheaton, and I want to start by saying thank you for bringing us on board during this pre-bond period and teaming up with you, I want to point out, DEW does have significant experience in situations like this, being brought on during pre-bond and helping come up with the responsible budget for the project, for example, in Braderboro when they built a new fire station, West Fire Station, and they renovated their existing and then they renovated for a new police station, were brought on board during the pre-bond period, so we recognize the importance of having an accurate and responsible bond value, bond budget, and it's responsible, we take it very seriously, and we put a lot of effort into this. So our overall, this overall budget sheet is a recap, and there's a lot of detailed estimates that went in behind this, so to speak, and it's, it's, it's broken out by the construction costs by divisions, and I'll talk to that, and then we have professional services costs, subtitles for both, and then a total overall project budget of 5, 5,280,000 dollars. So starting with the construction cost, for those of you who maybe aren't familiar with construction terminology, we refer to, there's trades in construction, like there's site work, and most of you probably know that's where you're digging in the ground, you're putting in dirt and pipe, and you want to make sure you have your soils done correctly, so when the foundation goes in is properly supported, there's concrete, we know what concrete is, there's steel, I won't read them all, and then there's some of the others over, fire protection, plumbing, HVAC and electrical, all of these trades that we envisioned for the current design in this project, we estimated in-house, we have seven estimators, and we broke this up, it was people's strength, we had one person dedicated to the site work and the concrete, our in-house mechanical engineer focused on the pricing for the mechanical, which is the heating, ventilation, air conditioning, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, and the third estimator did the balance, and then we, we assembled all the costs for the total cost. So I won't go down each line item, but we're ready, we feel questions on them as, as you want, but we, again, we have the cost for construction shown, we have our costs, our construction management fee, insurance, and general conditions, and then the line item within the construction costs, you see a design and owner's contingency, you can see the level of documentation where it's at, the architect and the design team haven't been released to go full steam ahead yet, so at this stage, it's our recommendation, we, you need to, we need to as a team carry a contingency, we don't know everything yet, not everything's been designed, but what we don't do is, we estimate those divisions I mentioned earlier, as we see it, we don't put contingency on all those, we estimate those as we see it per the drawings and our meetings that we've been having, as Mike mentioned, and then we assign a contingency that we all manage moving forward. Then the next category is professional services costs, and you can see those, there's site design, geotech report, testing and permitting, you know, what's the unknown on this project, you know, we're gonna finish design, of course, but this isn't a renovation, we don't have that, what's in the walls, change orders, you know, added scope, what we don't know is what's in the ground for sure, although we know around the area, but still, some of this money is to get a geotech engineer there to do some test pits, dig up some dirt, make sure that the surface supporting your structure is adequately designed and the soils are suitable, there's architectural and engineering fees, this architect is for the structural engineers, for the fire alarm engineer, the electrical engineer, mechanical engineer, plumbing engineers, not just architectural, apparatus bay and decontamination equipment, that is a budget that Mike has provided for, at this point in time, training and emergency operation furnishings not included at this point in time, and the last item we've listed under professional service costs, is utility company charge allowance, to be determined if there's a full-mounted transformer, we may not have utility company charges, but if, if it's like round-mounted, we, we likely would. So that's the overall budget, I do want to point out that as we proceed and move forward, these are numbers at this point in time, and this arrangement as construction manager, it is all open book, some of these numbers, when we get bids eventually, when the design is done, and we get three to five to six bids in each trade, all of that is open book, all of it's reviewed together as a team, and we, as a team collectively, would make a decision on who to move forward with, with subcontractors to support the job. Any questions? And, yeah, yeah, and any money not spent, like that contingency, we could be hopeful on that, if it's not all needed, that, this potential, it's, if it's not spent, it, it gets returned.
I have one question.
Yes.
Does that cover getting water from this issue?
Yes, about 1,100 linear feet of a sprinkler line, getting water as well.
I'm referring to?
Yeah, bringing it up the road, yes, we priced that, and that's one of the subs, we reached out to check our pricing on that, how much per linear foot, so we were pretty close together, so we have that included. Yes. Awesome. Thank you.
I mentioned, I mentioned you have a full version of that in your handout, so it's, you got the slide version in the beginning, but it's also on page 44, so it's a larger version further in as well, in addition to some of the architectures, and my computer goes.
Can you bring it over where you are?
I don't know, I mean, I would think further away from the projector would be worse. Where's Julius?
Somewhere else.
Good answer.
Maybe plug it in?
I don't know if you can.
I'm just thinking basic electrics, in case the battery's doing some power saving. Do you have your power cord with you, Michael? I just, I was thinking, just a power cord, just to keep the laptop from going into power saving. I just, I think it's a power cord, just to keep the laptop from going into power saving.
I'd usually try the true fifteen girls. Ten minutes to warm up.
Do you want to start warming it up?
It's a disconnected, reconnected. Very effective, good motivator.
So just to wrap up the financial overview, so I mentioned the total cost, five point two eight million, the article is four point five million with the bond of four million. So, the article also includes two hundred thousand dollars from congressionally-directed spending that Senator Shaheen was able to secure for the town, and that is something that would go away if we were not able to show reasonable progress to, that we were going to construct the new station. And then also the appropriation, and this year, some from the town's fund balance and some from taxation. So I mentioned there's some things that are not included in the warrant article. One is, the town received eight hundred and forty thousand dollars from the state through the Invest NH Affordable Housing Program for the project over at Route ten in Perry Lane, the affordable housing project. So we're suggesting putting five hundred thousand of that money towards this project. And then, last year, we had an article that saved three hundred thousand dollars in the fire station's capital reserve fund. So we're, that's something that's under the selectman's authority. So, that covers a lot of those contingency and some of those costs that we hope not to need versus borrowing for that amount. We can use these other funds to try to keep that cost down. So that is what we had for the fire station. This is a public hearing. We'll pause again, ask for questions, comments, ideas?
Is it just the one station that will be eliminated by this or in the future is the other ones that will go?
So that's correct. So this station would just be, the current station, two under the town hall has three bays, so this one would have four. Obviously, the, you know, employee spaces are much different, but yes, it would only replace the station.
Would always keep the other ship?
Always is a long time, but there's no immediate plan for any other station projects, not in our capital improvement plan or... All right, seeing, what's that?
Article four.
All right, so we'll move on to the next one. So these other ones are much quicker, and we got the projector turning off, so we'll keep going. So again, this is very small, I will not, I will not read this whole thing, but I'll give you a summary. So Article four is to reconstruct North Winchester Street and California Street east of Route ten. So, California Street crosses Route ten, this is only the section basically around the mill property and kind of just west of that. You might be saying, we don't have warrant articles every year to approve a road to be reconstructed, and that would be true. This one, for better or worse, we were able to receive some, what they call forgivable loan, which is essentially a grant, and then low-interest loan through the state. To receive those funds, we're required to have a bond article, and that's the same situation for these next two items as well. So that's why we have these articles that normally we wouldn't necessarily have. The town, the selectmen appointed an advisory committee which reviewed traffic flow options in 2023. Based on the committee's recommendation and public input, no changes to the traffic flow are being made, so both roads will stay two-way. There's no one-way traffic being incorporated, I mentioned, so when we get to the end, I'll go over the kind of the whole, the whole cost of the project. But I mentioned the forgivable loan and the low-interest loan, and there's no direct tax rate impact on this article in 2024. So again, the total project, this is another one where there's other funds that are not incorporated, the total project cost is about one point nine million. There's the forgivable loan, I think, grant, low-interest loan, a Northern Borders Regional Commission grant that the town received, which we had also received for the other side of the mill, South Winchester Street and West Street. And the Menadnok Alliance for Sustainable Transportation, MAST, awarded a sidewalk grant, seventy-five thousand dollars. And the bulk, the remainder would be made up by local capital funds and the sidewalk committee funds. So these, again, probably hard to see, you have larger ones in your handout, just kind of giving examples of what the road's gonna look like. So this is North Winchester Street, this is at the Route ten intersection, so we're looking to approve that intersection. Right now, it's kind of a slip lane, we're trying to make it so it narrows up a little bit, slows down the traffic, to try to make it safer. I believe this is just a stretch of North Winchester Street. And this is the North Winchester Street, kind of California Street, Main Street intersection here, so the Thompson Bridge is over here. So we're looking to narrow that up, that area, if you're familiar with it, is exceptionally wide right now, so we're gonna narrow it up a little bit, improve the crossings. And then this is the California and Route ten intersection. That one's staying more similar to how it is. So that is all I have on that one. So we'll pause for any questions, comments or concerns on Article four. Seeing none, just mention that we do have Ben Dreyer with Underwood Engineers and some of his team who've worked on this project on Zoom as well, in case we had any technical questions, seems like we're all set then, so you guys can go back to your evening. Move on to Article five. So this is one of these, another one of these articles that I mentioned where we need to get borrowing authority. So this one is as a result of a state-funded energy audit that the town performed last year. Some of you might know wastewater treatment plants are significant electricity users, so I think in 2023, our property is gonna, our wastewater treatment plant, West Swansea, is gonna use over thirty thousand dollars in electricity. So one of their, they recommended some energy efficiency improvements to lower the usage, and then a solar array to help offset that usage. Solar system would be owned by the town, so it's not a lease situation, and there's no direct tax rate impact in 2024. This is another one where there's multiple funding sources that I will give an overview of in a minute. So if folks are familiar, this is the plant on Denman Thompson Highway, just down the road here a little bit, so the road is out here, the lagoos are here, this is the proposed kind of area we're talking about to put the solar array. One of my questions, which you might be wondering, is, is this going to limit future uses of this property? We're gonna talk in the next article, how this system has some kind of limitations right now. Are we tying our hands by putting this solar array there? Are we gonna need another lagoon? I asked the former operator who's here tonight, Scott Self, and also DPW and our contracted operator, they all said, another lagoon is not likely, that's a good spot for it. So if Scott wants to speak to that at some point, he can, but that was one thing I was concerned about, that seems like it's not gonna be an issue. So I mentioned we were awarded, or maybe I didn't, awarded state funding for this project, so we issued what's called a request for qualifications to select a company to give us a little bit more of a detailed proposal. And we, through that process, selected Revision Energy. We have Jude Nuru from Revision Energy here, who'll ask to come up and maybe speak a bit about the project, and then answer any questions you might have. As I mentioned, the total usage right now is a little over thirty thousand per year. And based on the other funding sources, we're expecting the town sewer fund costs to be relatively minor, in the range of around eighty thousand dollars.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Jude Nuru, I'm from Revision Energy. I've been working with Revision Energy for the last three years, a little over three We have been in business a little over three years now, working with municipalities, you know, schools, and, you know, businesses across three different states, Maine, New Hampshire and Mass. So we celebrated our twentieth year last year. We have about five branches across these three states. We have two branches in New Hampshire. And this is, I would like to know, Revision Energy is more like a household name, but just, in order not to waste your time, I would like to know how many of you have heard about Revision Energy, or have done business with us, either as an individual or at organization level?
Has anyone heard of Revision Energy? Or yeah, seems not.
Okay. Yeah, so, so Revision Energy is a B Corp, which means that we went through our independent verification process to be certified that our operations are consistent with the triple bottom line, people, planet, before profit, and we are also a hundred percent employee-owned. So the benefits that come to the company is shared among all the employees, we have about four hundred and sixty employees across all our locations. So I would like to use this opportunity to thank the town of Swansea, I'm also a resident here, but I don't work for the town. So, for selecting us to partner with the town to build this important project. We have done several of wastewater treatment plant project, notably Keen, the largest, Keen is right in Swansea here, it is our largest wastewater solar project. We have also built one for Winchester, the city of Lebanon, town of Hanover, city of Clermont, Hoopset, and several others. So, and we have several others under construction. So we have quite substantial experience in building projects like this. So we were selected through the B process, and the design is one hundred and twenty-two point seven kilowatt DC. That means that that would be a hundred KW AC. When we talk about the system from the utility point of view, we are talking about AC. So this system is projected to generate about one hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-six kilowatt hours of energy. And that is a little about what the site is currently consuming, like the wastewater treatment plant, which is about one hundred and forty thousand kilowatt hours. So that would be about one hundred and twelve percent of energy offset, meaning that there will be some excess energy that will be sent to the grid. So what, the way that we have designed the system is to interconnect it to the ever-source grid. So currently, there's a thirty KVA transformer at the site, which is too small for the system that we have designed for the site. So we are going to drop a new transformer, which is going to be hundred KVA, to replace the existing site. And in terms of site preparation, we are just, the site is already cleared, so we are already cut trees, it's already an open field, so we are going to remove just about four trees. We have earmarked those trees in our proposal. We are envisaging that the town probably can do that, if you want to do that, that will add some cost. So when you consider the site, the fact that we are not going to do site clearance, we are not going to do fencing, because there's already fencing at the site, and the service, there's enough service capacity within the building. The cost of the project comes in about, you know, roughly about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, roughly. That is quite lower compared to other systems of the same size. And the reason being that, like I said, we are not going to clear the site, it's already cleared, we are not going to fence, and the service is, you know, quite okay. And this location is also not too far away from our branch in Brentwood. So that helped the cost compared to, if you were to build the same system, let's say in the north country, that would probably be much, much more higher than what we have estimated. So, this system, with all of the consumption and the offset, this, we are envisaging that the town can get a fifty percent of the cost from the state. I'm not too sure exactly the source of that funding, but I understand from the RFQ that we responded to, the town will be getting about fifty percent of the cost from somewhere. And then we've also modeled a system for the town to be able to take thirty percent of the total project cost from the federal government investment task credit. And so, all of that will boil down to about the, maybe the town having to come out with about twenty percent of the project cost. So with all of that incentive coming in, the system will pay off itself in just about three years. So that's a cool project, and these are incentives that can really help the project, you know, pencil. So that's just a brief overview of the project. If there are questions or any clarification, either relating to the system size, or, you know, the projections or other savings assumptions, I'm happy to address those questions.
Soon done. Thank you.
Article six. So this is also related to the wastewater treatment plant, so the town applied for and has been awarded a grant through, or again, a forgivable loan, which is why we have to have an article, through the state to do a feasibility study of the West Swansea wastewater treatment plant. That facility is approaching its limits on phosphorus treatment currently, which would reduce, or would restrict it from accepting additional users. So we applied for, and as I mentioned, have been awarded funding to basically conduct a study to evaluate the system, and hopefully develop some recommendations to address those limitations.
If you want to stay there, Michael.
Just stay there. Probably should. Any questions or comments or concerns on that item? Yes, Bruce?
Bruce O'Ginn. Kind of curious why these two warrant articles weren't brought before the capital improvements committee to, for inspection, just to even talk about warrants?
The feasibility study came up over the last few weeks. We initially applied, and we're not selected, and then we're selected subsequently. The other one, honestly, we're working with the Energy Commission, I think it was just an oversight, based on that it's a sewer and largely grant-funded, but yes, probably should have been discussed.
Was there any, and I noticed, probably you don't want some other questions afterwards, but I noticed that there's no provisions to the oil chemicals at all for engine tube to be replaced. Is there any consideration for that, so that the fire clerk can start looking to try and get into that and replace an engine tube? If you don't know anything about it this year, my understanding is that it's gonna take a long time, a lot longer time to be able to procure that truck?
Well, it's, we'll probably be, probably be on the warrant next year, and then it would probably take about a year to build it. We just put a hundred thousand dollars or so into it.
Yeah, three years ago.
Yeah.
But the life span of that truck was three years, so the idea was to move it forward so that we can put it on the warrant, so this year, so the fire clerk can start going out and...
In a perfect world, if the fire station bond was approved, that would have been the plan. Our priorities now are the fire to the station, and then the truck. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, we'll move on to the next article, Article seven, which is the operating budget. Total operating budget recommendation is seven million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand and fifty bucks. An increase from the 2023 budget of about seven point two percent. Uh, an increase from the 2023 budget of about seven point two percent. Uh, the default budget is listed here with most of the adjustments based on debt service being paid down, a lease being paid off and picking up bond payments for Upper Wilson Pond Dam. Uh, on the warrant, the voter's choice is between the default budget and the operating budget. And the difference between those is just under four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Major increases, uh, leading to that increase in the executive department. We previously had, uh, a shared human resource coordinator and human services, general assistance, uh, position. Um, that, that person is going to be shifting to part-time status, is going to continue to do the general assistance portion. Um, and we're planning to make the human resource coordinator position full-time. Um, human resources used to be something that just kind of got tacked onto finance. When you become a new employee, you know, they'll help you get your paperwork set up. Unfortunately, it continues to become increasingly, um, specialized and, um, a challenging role. So we want to have a dedicated person to be able to focus on employee health and safety, developing, uh, personnel-related policies, uh, being a resource for the employees. So we're proposing that position to be a, a full-time position. So it's not adding, uh, a benefit package, but it is adding, um, basically half of the, half of the wage. Um, in elections, 2024, as everyone knows, if you try to watch TV, it's an election season. So we have, uh, four elections in 24. Um, the first one is in a couple of weeks and then the town election, the state primary, and then the federal election. So there's an increase for that. Um, health insurance, this was definitely a big one. Uh, we saw a fifteen percent premium increase. Um, in addition, we have about, I think six is what I counted vacant positions. Some of those employees might have been a lower cost plan. We, our typical practice has been to budget for those as a two-person plan, kind of somewhat in the middle. Um, so I think part of the increase is also, uh, reflecting those vacant positions. Uh, planning, as a lot of the folks that are on various committees know, we've had some staffing turnover over the last few years in the planning department. So we're looking to try to be more competitive with our wages and hopefully, uh, see some more longevity. Personnel administration, that's just general, um, kind of employee costs, social security, retirement, um, different employee-related costs. The recycling center is looking to add a third full-time employee. Uh, they're also almost always hiring for part-time employees. If anyone's interested in, uh, working a few shifts a week, that would be, be great. We have a nice new, uh, clean improved facility over there. So, uh, go see Josh, he's in the back in the yellow jacket. Um, general assistance, we've also seen an increase in the need for assistance and higher costs. As rents go up and different other expenses go up, um, the costs when folks are in, uh, emergency, need of emergency assistant, those costs have increased. Debt service, I mentioned the Upper Wilson Pond Dam project. Folks that were here at the beginning know the selectmen, uh, approved that, awarded that contract. So we're hoping to see that construction start soon. We're now paying, uh, our share of the debt service on that. And the sewer fund is up a little bit for contracted operations and, uh, chemicals. Major decrease, we have a slight, uh, reduction to the line item for other cultural services. And we also wanted to mention, the board had a discussion with some health and welfare funding agencies. Uh, these are the listed amounts for some of the major ones that we are currently funding, but, um, several were looking for significant increases based on the Swansea residents that they're assisting. Uh, so the board wanted to make known that, uh, we do contribute, especially to some of them, some significant amounts. Um, and their, uh, their projected needs are increasing. So it's something we think, um, folks need to be aware of. So this just kind of wraps up again what we talked about, uh, at the beginning, the major increase, uh, seven point two percent. Revenues relatively similar, uh, the main increased revenues. Uh, Teresa and the finance team are doing a great job with investments, fortunately in this market. One benefit is the interest rates are higher. So this shows the net amount to be raised by taxes and the approximate tax rate impacted this article, again, based on 2023 assessments. Any questions, comments, or, yes, Barbara, go ahead.
I'm just curious, does the human resource coordinator, would that person oversee all services such as police, public works? I mean, all employees, ten employees?
Would provide human resources for those departments, but wouldn't oversee the departments.
They would what?
They would not oversee the departments.
No, no, but I mean.
Provide human resources, yes, for all the departments. Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening, Bruce, take care. Where, when you listed the ma- major increases, what sort of, oh, I was surprised it had some sort of research, engineers, and everybody else working on this stuff. How did you come up with these needed things other than, oh, we need another person here or there? Is there any evidence that shows us that these are necessary positions?
So the main new position is the, is the full-time recycling center position, which, uh, maybe Josh can speak to. I think it's gotten increasingly challenging to, um, rely almost solely on, on part-timers. Um, the HR coordinator, I can discuss further if you think, if you think that'd be helpful. Um, you also mentioned the, uh, engineers and contractors. Those are usually not funded through the operating budget, but are funded through, um, capital reserves and expendable trusts. So, uh, they're not usually incurred, included in the budget. But I do think, I can speak for the board, that they look closely at, at the requests and, and I don't think, uh, approved any of the requests lightly. Uh, it's certainly a more, more significant increase than, than we would normally like. Josh, why don't you come up?
So we're looking for a third full-time employee because of, um, problems filling part-time slots. Um, it's becoming increasingly difficult to find those positions. And I think it would also help build the team that we already have. Um, it's a very time-consuming job and, uh, third full-time could help kind of cover different slots and help us out and really improve overall operations.
Michael mentioned the work they're doing on the sewer.
Oh, yes, uh, Josh and Nick are also working to learn more about the sewer operation, the West Swansea wastewater treatment plant and hoping to work on getting their licenses so they can help, um, cover. So that's another way that that kind of takes their time away from their other duties, can help, uh, kind of backfill it with this other position. We've been looking for the full-time seasonal position, which we had, uh, in the budget for several years. Finally did fill it and then he went back to wherever he lives in the winter. Um, so just really needed another dedicated, um, person over there.
Really help turn it up the team, kind of help build up the team that we already have and ensure that we have another person that's able to train as we get new people. Our, uh, current staff is a variety of ages and not really guaranteed to have somebody who lasts ten years. It could be a two, three-year stint or looking for a little more longevity, I guess, with that side of it. So we can help grow in that position and really just help all operations and residents help come out as well. So I think it'd be a very important thing to have that third person. Any, any questions?
Mike, can you, you said that Josh will be looking into some of the, um, operations of the wastewater treatment plant? So can you clarify, I mean, we have a company that runs that plant. So what is it that they won't be doing that Josh would have to pick up those, um?
I could, I could speak that, speak to that for you. So, you know, Scott, the guy from operating the sewer plant, he's a real asset and did the work of what would basically take three operators right now. So we are using a contracted operator right now because of the lack of licensed applicants. It's that simple. And one of our, I wouldn't say long-term, but it's not a short-term goal, is if we can get Josh and Nick to have their licenses. It's a stage one license that's required. They're in the process of trying to get that now. And then they would work with the operator, be trained for a period of approximately three to five years so they can get their stage two license. And then with a goal, the future goal of waiting, having an operator run the plant. Uh, but it is long-term. I think Josh and Nick can speak with Scott definitely can. It's pretty complex. It's not just something you pick up in a little bit of time and the demands keep changing. A lot to do with the permit for operating the plant. The demands keep changing. So if everything worked out well, in a three to five-year term, we could possibly go away from a contractor. Uh, but, but that's definitely down the road. But the more, once they would get their stage one licenses, they would get more involved with the daily operations of the plant. And, uh, we can start to scale back some of the operational costs. Still, still use the contractor to scale back how much they do and start preparing more over the town. Any other questions on that?
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh. Proceed. So we've got these, uh, charts and graphs that we include each year. Just gives you a sense of kind of the overall, um, budget picture. Um, so the different percentages by department. And then the revenue breakdown, pretty typical fifty percent from property tax and the rest divided up.
Michael.
Yes, sir.
Is there, um, this is showing the operating budget going up, seven point two percent. Does that include what we're going to be paying for all these other things that we've been discussing until this point?
That is just for the operating budget.
Do you have an estimate of what that's going to be of all the bonds passed? And we have to start paying, paying the bonds, how much that's going to affect the tax rate?
I do, yes, at the end. We get to a summary of the articles at the end. So next up, Article eight. These next two will look, uh, familiar to folks each year. Um, so this first one is kind of the non, non-DPW items, uh, total amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand. You can see the list of funds and how much is being recommended. This was based on the capital improvement committee's, uh, work throughout the summer. Bruce is here, the vice chair. Mr., uh, Mr. Biddle emailed me that he would not be here, but I think he might be on Zoom if there are any questions. So again, this is the first of two. They do a six-year plan. Major increases are, are located, are identified here. The largest one for the Mount Caesar Union Library, based on their, uh, renovation project they have ongoing currently. Any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Seeing none, we'll keep going. Article nine, so this is the DPW-related funds, total amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Major increase was for highway equipment, based on, uh, equipment prices increasing significantly, even more than, more than general inflation. And the major decreases are town bridges and coverbridges. And I remember last year we had a separate article, uh, based on some one-time state funding. So we were able to bring those, um, funding amounts down from prior years. So this article is contingent, so if Article three passes, doesn't matter what happens with this one. But this is kind of the, um, backup plan to, if a bond article does not pass, we had an article like this last year, um, trying to put away three hundred thousand a year to save up, um, towards a, a new or improved existing fire stations. Seeing no hands waving, we'll keep going. Article eleven would be establishing expendable trust funds for, uh, the Cheshire National Rail Trails, raising ten thousand dollars to start that fund. The town for seven or eight years has had a rail trails advisory committee and they work with the staff to, um, go out and seek grants, do volunteer efforts, um, hire contractors. So this would help support their efforts and would provide some matching funds to grants. No hands waving, we're getting close. So the next article, actually the last article of another business, is to set up an expendable trust fund for ambulance services and raise forty thousand dollars. One of the, uh, items we spent a lot of time in the first half of the year on was ambulance service. So, uh, a lot of folks probably know Delusio Ambulance closed rather abruptly in May of 2023. Uh, we've worked on a regional approach to select a new vendor. And as of July first, Swansea contracted with the Cheshire County EMS Department. Our current contract with them runs basically three years through 2026, but the rates are subsidized by federal funds. Uh, we know we're getting a discount, so the board thought it was prudent to start saving for that, uh, potential cliff after 2026. Um, so the payments are increasing over the next three years up to, you know, eighty-one and a half thousand dollars. But what we got from another vendor, Rescue Inc., which potentially is a more true cost, uh, was over three hundred thousand a year. So forty, forty thousand this year, and if we increase that in future years, isn't necessarily going to, um, save up three hundred thousand, but it will at least help give some flexibility to help, uh, offset increases in the future. Seeing no questions or concerns. So this is that summary we were mentioning. So if all the articles pass, again, the contingent one is either, it's assuming either that passes or the fire station. Um, it'd be just under a fourteen percent increase. The town tax rate would be eight point, eight dollars and sixty cents. So that'd be an increase for a two hundred thousand dollar house of your town tax bill of little over two hundred dollars from 2023. So we'll say again, this is a public hearing. So if any other questions, comments, input, it'd be greatly appreciated. Um, the next step will be the deliberative session, February sixth, weather permitting, seven PM at Wickham Hall. That's where the articles can be amended. Uh, and then the voting day is March twelfth at the Nadenoch High School gym from eight AM to seven PM.
Nora. Nora.
Yes, my name is Nora Skancy and I'm a member of the, uh, Selectment Appointed Advisory Committee for the Golden Rock Range. And that, uh, project has been in place since about this time last year. Meeting a couple of times a month to look at the range and call property, figure out what to do and what was wrong with it. What misses to be, and we have been working very closely with this weapon, making, you know, more and more reports, keeping them crazy with what's going on. And our main focus was applying to some grants to, uh, renovate the building because, uh, Architect Peckert had done a, uh, study a few years ago and said basically a restoration of that building would be about a million dollars to do it correctly. Everyone knows that, you know, if you didn't have a grant, there would be no way we could do that. So in the intervening time, what's happened is that we realized that there's some serious, uh, repair work that needs to be done to the building, uh, to stop water infiltration, the roof, the windows, and some drainage. And so I just, the Selectmen are aware of this and, you know, I just wanted to weigh it out. I was probably hearing that if there was any wages consideration. We do have thirty thousand dollars in capital improvement fund we use for the building. We did make some electrical repairs this past year, which was very. We did make some radical repairs this past year, which was very successful. And the building has been getting used for restoration, whether it be for the community, warm roofs, if they're running a grant during the warm weather. Kind of senior citizen outreach program, they call coffee match, which quite a few seniors attended. And we also did a fundraiser in the area, which was a bluegrass festival, trying to earn money to go to work on this project. So all I'm saying right now is that the roof, you know, according to the town staff, really needs to be replaced, the entire, the windows, which are original windows and glass and frames, and we've talked to preservation people, can be rebuilt and reconstructed and probably should be, the building has significant sort of, not only the town, but the state. It's one of those things that stand alone during the falls that remain in the state and still here. So all I'm asking is maybe the Selectmen did some consideration to some component of these, as we talked about, some of the meetings that could be included and having all this resolved this area.
I thought we had somewhere in the budget for the range, a certain amount that was going into a trust fund.
There is a capital improvement funds, there's approximately $30,000 that's there. We have not been funding that, you know, for the last couple of years because the Selectmen wanted to know what the use of building is going to be. They have been adding additional.
We have been, you mean?
I'm sorry, come on, they, they put money in there, so just past year, they put $1,000 in, the last time we added money. And there's approximately $30,000 in there. And the repairs exceed that, so.
So we don't have anything currently in our budget for that fund?
There's $30,000.
No, 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 to be added.
Yeah, so there's no work in the budget for the range. There's no account specifically other than the capital improvement.
Well, there is a capital improvement, but don't we usually put money in each year to add to the capital improvement?
Bruce, do you know what they put in this year?
I'll tell you, so this year, the capital improvement committee did not elect to put any money in there. In 2022, it was $30,000, and then 2003, they added another thousand. So there's approximately $30,000.
No, but I don't understand this. I thought annually that we put money into that capital improvements program for the range. What I'm hearing is we don't annually do that?
No.
There's nothing recommended this year.
We know we can't save enough money to do a million dollar project. So we can put in a little seed money to try and get some grants, kind of like what happened here.
Right. So there is money allocated this year for?
Yeah.
Well, then how can you be putting seed money in if?
There's $30,000 in there.
But nothing, that's just what's carried over, right? I mean, but there's nothing added this year. Why aren't we adding this year?
I wasn't on a capital improvement.
Okay.
Which do you think is more important, the Grange Hall or the fire station?
I don't think that it's an either or. I'm assuming they're both important.
I do. I think the fire station is far more important than the Grange Hall. So we just elected this year not to contribute any money into that fund.
But we have other projects that we're also contributing to.
We bypassed the entry two, which the Selectmen don't figure to put on there, but we think that's pretty important and wasn't included.
So what I'm hearing is this isn't necessarily the place to add to it that had to have been at the capital improvements.
Well, you would have to be, you can vote the next month's meeting.
And that should still be.
The deliberative session, you can adjust the cost.
But this is a public hearing, so if you're still, the budget couldn't be adjusted into a downed public hearing. I'm not giving an example or anything like that. I'm just saying that, you know, Mike Jasmine, who was the facilities person, you know, looked at the building and, we've been all through that. We've heard, we've had a couple of major water leaks that only came out this summer. They have new leaks. And so basically the question is, you know, do we let go another year or do we need to work on the recreation when we come back with capital improvement committee or whatever? Can we just say, we want to keep the building water tight? It's important enough to the community that we want to replace the roof, the windows, and the drainage to prevent water from running in the basement. Once it's water tight, we can continue to have programs there, new community, how we get people interested in the project, but we've done new buildings as a community, taken care of something. You know, that's a very important building. That's, that's really what it's down to. And it has to be done in the basement, we all get that. And we know it's not like the million dollar project. And, you know, we had the coffee connection group there all summer long, and the folks were fine with it, just, you know, just shaping the building, not looking for it to be, as you would say, the loose touch, you know. But they just want, they just want to have a place to have coffee, you know, or activities, you know, but there's a lot of isolated people, seniors and community people don't have a place to go. And it makes a nice place, but the other thing that it's good for is there are a lot of nonprofit organizations that continuously say, we don't have a place to meet, you know, we can't pay to meet somewhere, we want to have a group. And then the town hall has gotten to a point where the office space has consumed the building, so this would make a place for the town government could actually have, like if they had a meeting, you know, a stadium or something, just walk across the street and use the meeting. That's it.
Nora, did you have anything on that?
Mike Jasmine has been working on estimates, and what Mike told me is that, you know, just the way everything is, he thinks it's between 80 and 100,000 for the roof. And it's about 20,000 for the windows, and then, you know, somewhere around seven to 10 for the drains. But he cannot get firm estimates until they know that we're like serious to move on this. He's got rough estimates. The other thing that's important to know is like, we applied for the community development finance authority grant twice, we were denied the first time, and plenty of other towns in the state. The Moose Plain Grant is a grant that could work towards restoring the windows, so we may get money in addition to this.
I would suggest that you get real estimates for that roof and fix the roof first, because that's, that's the most important. You got $30,000 in, you know, we fixed this roof out back here, and that was less than $30,000. It's not as big as, I'm, I'm bigger than this, but still, I think you should get, even though nothing to me put in, maybe we'll put in this year to that, you got $30,000.
Wouldn't be 85, I suppose.
Scott, they're talking about a complete replacement of the roof with cusses.
Yeah. I guess the question is, does it need it? You know, I mean, if you want to save the building, you don't got $30,000 to do it.
But it does serve a purpose in the community because, you know, you know, it's a place for, you know.
Oh, I agree. I like the thought of that. Yeah, it'd be nice if it replaced it.
Was there some testing?
Well, it might be me, I just couldn't recall, but I couldn't hear him because he was directing his voice that way, but I just want to get the drift of it. Are you trying to get the main things done, water tightened? Is that what I understand? So you can buy time to gather money?
And do fundraising and.
So you're trying to get accomplished the roof and the windows so it's tight, so no more destruction will happen?
Yeah.
So we'll stabilize the building, am I correct?
Yes, because if we don't, we won't need it.
Yeah, so that's what you're asking for?
Yes.
And I couldn't barely hear, like, these estimates could be 200,000?
The estimate for the roof was 85,000 to 100,000, and he's had several people look at it, but, you know, again, there's not an account set up for this, and by finding out whether the town wants to do this, you know, then he can get more firm estimates. Plus, there's the grant aspect, we may still be able to get grant money for some of the projects. And that's just the first new project, you know. This isn't a total restoration, this is a big project, we did a total restoration, but this would buy time, as you said.
In your eyes, you looking at 10 years to have this accomplished, or?
Well, you know, grants.
They change every, I understand that.
Diligently.
So something could happen.
Yes, the committee has been working, writing grants. We've worked with former town planner, Julie Field, who is very diligent. It's just that, you know, what grants are available and how they apply, they're all different, they have all different criteria, so we just keep trying.
So if it isn't done, what do you expect the building's going to happen? Is it going to eventually just cave in and we're going to look at a cave-in building?
Yeah.
Are you saying within a year, does anybody estimate that? So we got lots of other gear here, and the roof is going to cave in. Is that what's going to happen?
I don't think anyone put that. I guess, you know, it's all going to get better.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's putting a time frame like that on it, but yeah, it's been, it's been a long time since it had any, you know, work done to it.
But I had coffee in there with you, right?
Yeah.
That was one of the activities. And then during.
So it's safe enough for people to go in there and we're in there, we're safe, so you do that.
Right.
Yes, Barbara?
Just like you said, I offer my support to funding that fund, the capital reserve fund for the range, even if it's a nominal amount, because I know when you go for grants, being able to prove that you have community support is a factor often. And, you know, I think if we are, even if it's not a huge amount, but if we continually are funding that, or providing some funds in that to build that up, that I think that would be important in getting more money to protect this building or rehab this building. And, you know, I sit here, the number of years Wickham Hall, you know, sat here without anybody touching it and ended deteriorating. And now it's used basically as the meeting place for the town, you know. So, you know, that as Swansea expands, you know, that could very well be a viable meeting place and well utilized by the community, so I don't think we should let it just fall apart and rot.
Nora, could you explain the focus here of your coffee connection and how just having people go to something like that will help with your grant application as far as the usage?
Like I said before, every grant has different criteria. The Community Development Finance Authority Fund had a special grant for community centers. Things that serve the community sense of place, you know, a gathering location, place to have meetings, a place where people can go. So we didn't have any activities when we did the first grant application. We said that first, but we didn't have planned that too. It's already a place, we said, well, it's chicken today, you can't have activities when the water's going to go through the roof, or there's no heat, or whatever, you know, no windows. So the grants, the grant was for a community center, so we came to the Selectmen and said the use that we feel is the most important is a community center or a place for seniors and the town. And so to show an activity, we developed a coffee connection, and we had a lot of attendance. You know, some of the meetings had, you know, 18 cars there, you know, different people who came in from the community and stayed for over a couple of hours, doing the bluegrass festival there. And we also, Swansea Preservation Society and the Advisory Committee, which is not the role of them to come up programming, so Mike had asked to work with the Recreation Department, which, you know, we started a dialogue with the Recreation Director, but I think we also asked to take, the committee will continue working on coming up with ideas and things that we could be proceeding, and so we will continue doing that.
Even more reason for the town to show continual support for the preservation.
And I say 18 people, how many sessions could we have?
We had six sessions.
We had six, and we have stopped on cold weather.
What?
And it was growing each week, so I think there's definitely an interest there for that. Thanks.
At the risk of opening a whole other can of worms, forgive, they have only been back in town for the last year or so, so I haven't been around for all of the going back and forth about putting new station or moving stations. If the fire department does not pass this year, could there be some thought given to putting the million dollars into the range and moving the town offices into the range and making the town hall the fire department?
So.
Has there been any cost analysis as to, you know, what that would cost to renovate the town hall for the fire department and the range for the town office?
So I can't, can't say 100% because we've never had that kind of dialogue with the Selectmen. We're just advisory. They, Selectmen appoint us, we meet and then we tell them what we think is the best route ultimately would be up to the Selectmen. I think if they were ever a project to renovate the town hall, and there was an interim need, that would certainly be maybe a smart thing, this is right across the street. But remember too, the building is a historic building, it's on the National Historic Registry. It is a meeting hall, someone did this on the second floor, and it's a meeting hall on the first floor, there's a dining room with a kitchen, and that's it. There's no office space in there, there's no room for office space, but it's a great place to have a meeting, you know, it just makes it a great place to meet.
So when I moved out to Swansea 20 something years ago, the town hall had, it wasn't office space like it is now. So I think you could make office space in the range, and if you wanted it, and probably still have a meeting there. I don't know what this footage is, I haven't been honestly there for a minute now. I'm just thinking, maybe you come to a coffee. Oh, it's, it's just the possibility of way you do like building we already own and not build another building if the town decides, no, we're not building that building this year. Justin, I?
Just, that is something we did consider and look at when Norm was the fire chief and Eric, our interim fire chief, is here as well. Unfortunately, a lot of the issues with the center station would not be resolved by getting the town hall out of the top. The doors are still low. That also is another building that has water that gets into it. The lockers are still in the, in the bays. There's still only one way in or out. Not to say there's not a way to, you know, do that, but I don't think it would be a small endeavor of just getting the town hall up. I'm not saying you're saying that, but I don't know, Eric, do you have any thoughts on that concept or?
Yeah, no, I don't.
He doesn't.
And, no, no, it wasn't, it's one of those ideas people tried to look at, but a lot of money to renovate the town hall as well.
I think, Jane, did you have your hand up?
Yes, last year, last year there was $1,000 in the fund for the range, so would it not be appropriate to show that that is reduced by $1,000 this year because the range fund doesn't have anything? Let me see, what do you call it? I can't, I don't know the terminology, but anyway, they didn't put anything in this year at all, totally decreased by $1,000. And it would seem to me that what has been said, it only makes sense if the town owns the building, you should be putting stuff in it every year. It's only to cover maintenance. Why do things fall apart because of deferred maintenance? It looks bad. It looks bad for our town. It's sloppy. And every time that we've had, which I can remember two in the last five or six years, we've had a warrant article on related to the range, and each time they pass, and don't tell me, yes, that they only pass by five votes or something, because if they pass by one, they pass. And so that showed some community support in the hinterland here of people who vote.
Anyway, thanks for considering.
Thank you. Anything else? Close the public hearing. Close the public hearing, and we are adjourned. Thank you. See you at the deliberative session.